Right next to that is our transportation network, which is a network of inadequate roads. We don't really have a mass transit system beyond HART, which is the most underfunded major transit agency in the country, based on the size of the metropolitan area that we're in.
Hi, I'm Becky Yetzha, and today on Talk to Your Government, we're spotlighting Harry Cohen, a Tampa native and a dedicated public servant. Currently Hillsborough County Commissioner for District 1, he's been actively involved in public service for years, serving on the Tampa City Council and championing crucial initiatives to improve infrastructure, transportation, and more. Welcome, Harry.
Becky, thanks so much for having me. It's very good to be here with you today.
So tell me, what does a county commissioner do?
Well, I think the first thing I should tell you is that when you're on the county commission, you are forced to know a little bit about a lot of different things. So one of the things that you do is really familiarize yourself with a lot of different aspects of both the community and our government. Whoever sits on the county commission sits also on different boards. So it's not just about being a member of the Board of County Commissioners itself and doing the land use and zoning work and making the laws for Hillsborough County. It's also sitting on other boards. I also sit on the Board of the Stras Center for the Performing Arts, one of many arts organizations that are doing great work in this community, really making Tampa Bay and Hillsborough County an art mecca. I also am on the museum board, so we can talk about the exciting capital campaign that is going on there. And in addition to that, you know, there's all kinds of regional initiatives that the county is involved in related to transportation, related to infrastructure, related to sidewalks and road paving and moving people around, and generally dealing with the huge amount of growth that we have seen in this community and that we continue to see.
Well, that's wonderful. What I was going to ask you is how are we dealing with the growth? Because hasn't this, the last couple of years, been just enormous growth here in Hillsborough County?
You know, we were growing when I was on the Tampa City Council from 2011 to 2019. We were definitely starting to pick up momentum. You could feel it in terms of having the Republican National Convention in 2012 and the beginnings of Water Street and all of the new development. But something really happened and clicked post-COVID. It had to do, I think, with people being able to make a choice of where do I want to live as opposed to being driven only by employment prospects. A lot of jobs, because they could be done from home, could then be done from anywhere. And I think it changed people's view of the Tampa Bay region. That combined with a huge uptick in tourism and people wanting to visit here has just been sort of the sweet spot of a population explosion. And we are dealing with it in all kinds of different ways. We are dealing with it in terms of our transportation infrastructure, which is really behind and inadequate to our needs now in terms of our needs for new fire stations and fire rescue capacity, both in the city and in Hillsborough County itself. And then the biggest one, of course, is water. The need to make sure that we not only can provide fresh water, but also that we have the storm water and wastewater capabilities to deal with the huge influx of new residents. That's not even getting into schools, which are under the school board, so are totally separate from the county. And that's not dealing with the things the state and the federal government are responsible for. Those are really things that our local governments, particularly at the county level, are responsible for.
So people are moving here because they love Florida? Or are they choosing Tampa? What do you think they're choosing Tampa for?
Well, I think there's a lot of reasons that people move here. Some of the easy ones are that the weather is great, that we are a state with no income tax and generally have a reputation for being a low-tax environment, a business-friendly environment. I think that notwithstanding the fact that we had pretty, I think, reasonable and tough COVID restrictions in the state of Florida, I think there was a perception that Florida was somehow a little bit freer than other states. And I think that attracted a lot of people. I think that in the Tampa Bay area, you have the opportunity to choose a lot of different types of lifestyles. You can live inside of a city and live an urban-type lifestyle. You can live a more suburban or more rural type of lifestyle. You're 30 minutes from the beaches. You're 60 minutes from Walt Disney World. There's an awful lot to be said, not to mention world-class universities and hospitals and medical centers and really a very, very diverse economy that supports a lot of different choices that people can make.
And great entertainment and great food and all that stuff.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So do you think people know about that?
So I think that they're really starting to. I think that that was oftentimes our problem in the past was that we were a really well-kept secret.
Yeah.
People didn't really know about everything that Tampa Bay has to offer. And I think in recent years, I think our Visit Tampa Bay and our other economic development agencies have done a really, really good job of getting the word out there. I also think that the success of our professional sports teams has given us a real profile all over the country that maybe we didn't have quite so much before. And then we also have one of the world's best airports and the largest port in the state of Florida. So we have an awful lot going for us. And communicating that, getting the word out, I think, is, has been the secret in the sauce. And now you see these new hotels and new, all sorts of new ventures and restaurants opening up here, seeing Tampa Bay as a vibrant and captive market.
Well, I mean, I definitely see it like that. And I'm super excited that other people are seeing it like that, too. But the growth has caused problems, right? Because as a county administrator, I can imagine that you would have to deal with some problems having to do with growth.
Well, I think that it's been, in many ways, an embarrassment of riches. But the fact of the matter is that we were not prepared for what we have seen infrastructure-wise. And that manifests itself in a lot of different ways. The biggest way that people feel it, the biggest thing that has clearly risen to a crisis level, both here, really nationally, but particularly in this area, is the availability of affordable housing. And it's not affordable. When I say affordable housing, people think that I'm only talking about low-income housing. I'm actually talking about housing at every single level of the market. Because if every single level of the market is stressed, it simply places a price pressure down on the next level of the market. And everything becomes more and more expensive. And that's, I think, what we've seen. And that is something that we are going to continue to grapple with as the years go by. Right next to that is our transportation network, which is a network of inadequate roads. We don't really have a mass transit system beyond HART, which is the most underfunded major transit agency in the country, based on the size of the metropolitan area that we're in. So that is a huge challenge for us going forward, how we are going to move people around. Because if we don't figure out how to better move people around, housing is going to get more and more expensive nearer to where the jobs are, which is going to cause commutes and commuting times to be much, much higher. So there's a real cyclical nature to some of these problems. You've got to get on top of some in order to make headway in solving others. And I think that that is, that infrastructure need is our biggest challenge going forward.
Do you think that there's a policy decision that we could be making that would help, you know, increase housing availability for people or affordable housing?
Well, I think that local governments have certain tools within their toolbox that they can use to make affordable housing affordable for the private sector to develop. And those are bonus density incentives when you allow someone to build affordable housing. I'll give you an example. Let's say that you're allowed to put by right 200 units on a piece of property. Well, if you commit to doing a certain amount that are defined as affordable, which generally is between 80 and 120% of the average median income. And I'm sorry to sort of get into this government speak, but that's what defines it.
Okay.
If you make a commitment to provide a certain amount of housing, the more you're willing to provide, the more units that you might be allowed to build over the original 200. That's a very effective way of incentivizing. But you have to have roads and schools and fire stations and water capacity to go with these things. You can't just do it in a vacuum. And it has to be smart. It has to be programmed for places where jobs are nearby and are plentiful. And, you know, it makes sense to put additional residents. You don't want to put that type of development in a place where there's nothing else around it. So it's a complicated mix of factors that go in. But certainly, it is the job of local governments to help to incentivize and get some more of those units built.
Yeah, that's a real problem, isn't it? And it affects everything.
It does, it does. And, you know, we have on the board disagreed with how much money we should put into direct assistance for affordable housing, particularly money that we use to match grants that we get from the federal and state government. The disagreements really have been about, should we put money into that? Or should we put money into straight infrastructure, into sidewalks and roads and things like that? Reasonable people can disagree, I think, about what is the right mix of spending priorities.
So tell me about the makeup of the Board of Commissioners.
Well, so it was very interesting. The Board changed significantly in 2022. Three of the seven commissioners were replaced. One was term limited out and two were actually defeated for reelection. And it changed the makeup in the Board from being five to two Democratic to four to three Republican, which is a pretty seismic change in a Board like ours. So in addition to new personalities, I think that that brings in new legislative priorities and definitely shifts, you know, the overall makeup and the overall outlook for what are going to be the Board priorities. What's interesting, though, is that really so much of what we do is nonpartisan and really doesn't, particularly land use and zoning, really doesn't follow along partisan lines. It's very, very interesting when you have a change in the Board because in land use and zoning, the changes aren't real predictable and the alliances aren't real predictable. It takes time as the new commissioners become more experienced with the things that turn out to be important to them when evaluating land use and zoning applications. So that's always a very, very interesting process to watch.
Where would a person who was just an average person in Hillsborough County, where could they go to find out what the commissioners are doing?
Well, first of all, hillsboroughcounty.org is a wonderful website. And of course, we have HTV, which is the county television station which broadcasts county commission meetings, planning commission meetings, all kinds of interesting, I think they're interesting, government meetings that are certainly a wealth of information. But, you know, I think also things like this, things like, you know, tuning into programs like this, going into neighborhood and community meetings where the elected officials are out. Most of us are out in the community and really want to engage with people because we want to hear what people have to say. We want to hear people's thoughts on ways that they'd like to see us do things differently. I hear a lot of really good ideas from people who just come up to me at random events and say, hey, can I bend your ear for a minute? This is something I've been thinking about. And when it comes budget time, the neighborhood associations that come forward with requests for money, for support, oftentimes get what they ask for. You don't get anything unless you don't, unless you ask for it. If you are walking along in your neighborhood and you notice that something could use improvement, it's always worth it to bring it up to us and see what we can do to be helpful. You know, we have major safety considerations to take into account here in Hillsborough County when we are resurfacing roads and redoing sidewalks and intersections and our entire traffic system because we do very, very poorly when it comes to pedestrian and bicycle safety. Oftentimes, it is citizen ideas and citizen-driven initiatives that lead to changes out there that improve the sidewalks and the intersections and the pavement. So it's really important that we have these dialogues and that we know the areas that need attention. I was in Town and Country last week. I got an earful from residents about certain sidewalks and roads that need county attention. And, you know, we're able to get out there and look into those things.
Oh, that's, I mean, I always imagine that that's probably what it is, is that the people who are there that are talking to you are the ones that are going to get listened to.
Well, I will also say that I, every commissioner runs their office differently. But in my office, my two aides are totally devoted to constituent service. That is their number-one priority, is to answer phone calls and emails and anything that comes in from constituents that need our help. One of my aides speaks fluent Spanish, so that is a resource for people that have linguistic barriers to get through in order to get service from the county. But oftentimes, it's people that need help with the city of Tampa or they need help with their federal or state government. And we're able to connect them to the resources that they need at those levels of government to get their problem taken care of. So that is something that I do really feel strongly about. If you call my office, we will do everything we possibly can to help you get to where you need to go to solve your problem. By the way, our number is 813-272-5470. And you can also reach us at hillsboroughcounty.org.
We talked about the growth in Hillsborough County and we talked a little bit about tourism. What does your office have to do with tourism?
Well, we fund Visit Tampa Bay and an awful lot of the economic development initiatives that take place. And, you know, we think of tourism as something that people just want to come to Florida. It's so great and sunny and it's a wonderful place to go for a week in the sunshine. But we are so much more than that as a destination. We have so much in the way of cultural offerings, in the way of professional sports, in the way of proximity to the beaches, as I was talking about earlier. We need to market that because every dollar that gets spent here ends up coming back to us in all kinds of different ways. It's not just the tax revenue. And there is a huge benefit to our tax bottom line by these visitors coming here and spending money here. There's no question about it. They do pay their fair share when they come through. They also pay a bed tax, which is a hotel tax per room. 40% of that goes to marketing tourism in order to put back in to getting those visitors to come here. But when people come for conventions, they eat in restaurants, they go to the theater, they spend money. They do all kinds of other things. And so this keeps a lot of our businesses afloat, keeps a lot of people employed. And like I said earlier, it's a real help in terms of our tax base and our tourism marketing dollars.
How has the Riverwalk affected tourism in downtown Tampa?
Well, I think the Riverwalk has done a great job of connecting things that used to not be connected. If you are getting off of a cruise ship and wander over to the Tampa Bay History Center and the aquarium, that's all in proximity of the cruise ships. Before the Riverwalk, you would have had to really fight your way through downtown in order to get to the Stras Center and the Art Museum and Curtis Hickson Park and Armature and all that great stuff that's on the other side of downtown. Now, the Riverwalk connects those two areas. And that connection doesn't take very long. It's very scenic. There's a lot of restaurants and bars and other hotspots that are opening up along that corridor. And it has drawn new hotels into our market. The catalyst for the kind of luxury and top-tier hotels that we're seeing downtown, I think, was the Riverwalk. And that is now helping us to attract even better and bigger conventions. So again, a lot of circular benefit to these things.
Well, who do I have to thank for the Riverwalk?
I think the Riverwalk is something that a lot of different people take benefit, take the credit for. But I'll tell you this. The last five mayors of Tampa all had a real role in making sure that happened. At some point during each of their tenures, they made an important investment in what became the Riverwalk. But the big catalyst for getting it done actually was Representative Kathy Castor, who got a grant from the Obama administration about 10 years ago to get the major part of the Riverwalk that we see today constructed. So she does get a huge amount of the credit for having done that.
Nice. It's one of the, I just think it's one of the things that our city has that just knocked it out of the park.
Well, and what's really spectacular is now it's being built on the other side of the river, on the west side, next to the Julian B. Lane Park, which I voted for as a city council member. And it also will connect to Bay Shore Boulevard, which at almost five miles long is, my understanding, still the longest unbroken sidewalk. I don't know if it's in the Western Hemisphere or North America or the world, but it's certainly right up there in the record books for holding that distinction. And it's now seamless with the Riverwalk. It's now going to be a situation where you can start at Ballast Point and literally walk all the way up, you know, past Armature Works or on the west side of the river, past Blake High School and north along the Hillsborough River.
The other question I have to ask you about is arts and culture. I hear that you are an advocate for arts and culture in our area, which is wonderful to me. Obviously, TBCN is in arts and we feel that very, very personally.
Well, I feel very strongly about the arts. I used to feel strongly about it because I just love going to shows and enjoying the performing arts and art museums and the kind of culture that art brings to the community. But that isn't ultimately what drives my passion for it now. Now it is that I see arts as a critical component of economic development. You cannot continue to grow as a community and attract the kinds of people and the kinds of jobs and the kinds of corporations that we want here unless you have a vibrant arts and culture scene and you are a community that values that. And that can't be faked. That is something that has to be real. And the way that it's expressed for real is in real, live government support for these programs and for people in the community that participate and attend. And if you go to a performance at the Stras Center, for example, you'll see that these theaters are filled up. They are filled up with people that enjoy these venues. And I will tell you that when we talk to corporations that look at moving here, of all the things that they ask about, oftentimes it comes down to they're looking to move here, you know, can their daughter get ballet lessons here? Maybe if they can't, that's a red sign that we're not quite at the tier that is a top-tier city. So it's very, very important that we offer these types of programs and this type of environment. The county just opened a new Tampa Performing Arts Center, so we are constantly trying to move the arts out into the community and make sure that it's not just about downtown. It's also about the USF area, which has phenomenal arts offerings, and also even South County where there's things, you know, there's a Playhouse down in Wyomama that does wonderful shows. There's a huge independent theater, World Stage Works, and all sorts of other companies in and out of Ebor City. The Art Museum, the Tampa Theater, the Zoo, the Orchestra, the Aquarium. All of this stuff is part of the culture that we are trying to promote.
What about the tax incentive for film? I know there's a Hillsborough County tax.
There is, there is a Hillsborough County tax incentive for film as well. That's also something, I believe that there were eight films that were filmed here just last year that got that type of grant money. So that's another huge industry that we ought to be courting even more aggressively, in my view, than we are now.
Yeah.
And I don't want to just say it's about arts and culture. It's also about sports.
Yeah, sports is entertainment, too.
We have a huge amateur sports complex that is out on Falkenburg, near Falkenburg Road, that I think we had 47 tournaments last year that people came in from all over the world in order to participate in. That translates into hotel nights and jobs and restaurant visits and money being spent here in this community. Our professional sports are another thing. There, you know, there's a lot of opinions about the Rays and whether they made the right decision in going where they're going. I will simply say that I'm thrilled about it. I'm thrilled that they're going to be in this region. I think it's a wonderful thing for St. Petersburg. It's also a great thing for Hillsborough County taxpayers because we have improvements that we have to make in coming years to Raymond James Stadium and to Amalie Arena for the Tampa Bay Buccaneers and for the Tampa Bay Lightning. And it is very, very helpful to our taxpayers that Pinellas is sharing in the burden. They are taking, they have about a third of the population of the region and they are taking responsibility for a third of the teams. And that means that we can focus on supporting the two teams that are based here and making sure that we keep them here for years to come and provide our fans with phenomenal experience.
Well, that's a very nice way of saying it. I know a lot of people get excited about where the Rays are. Well, we wanted to take some questions. So we have some emailed questions that came in. Philip asked a question. He says, "I live in Tampa and I know that the issues we're having in Hillsborough County is youth homelessness. What programs do we have in place that are helping to get the youth off the streets and into a safer environment?"
Well, the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners funds the Tampa-Hillsborough Homeless Initiative, which has a housing-first model and is the main agency that is responsible for trying to move people from homelessness to home. There are a number of different agencies that also deal with different populations. For example, Metropolitan Ministries has a niche population that it deals with, usually families. There are multiple resources that are available in terms of dealing with the homeless population. But here is the bottom line of the matter. The housing shortage crisis has driven more and more people into homelessness and it doesn't always look like what we think it looks like. I spent a day recently with the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office Homeless Liaison in Town and Country. And normally, when I'm in Town and Country, I'm driving. And since I'm driving my own car, I'm not necessarily paying as close attention to what's going on in the sidewalks and on the parking lots around me. But this particular day, since my focus was really homelessness, I was able to really observe what's really going on in plain sight right in front of all of us. And I'm not sure people are processing it when they see it. When you see cars that are parked at the end of a parking lot, sort of away from where all the action is, going into the store, and they look like they've been there for a while, that's someone living in their car. And that may be someone in their family living in their car. And they may have been living there for some time. They may also be new to it. And they may have been without a home for some period and then maybe had a place to stay for a while and then bounced back out again. There's a lot of stories of people sort of bouncing in and out of homelessness because they get a place to stay for a little while. They get some services over here for a little while, but they're not able to make the full bridge. And they end up, not necessarily on the street, but one step away from it. And we're seeing a lot more of it. And it's a really, really big challenge for the community. And part of the other thing that makes it a challenge is that when winter comes, there's so many places in the United States that people leave because the elements and the cold drive them to a warmer climate. So we experience also a seasonal rise in the homeless population that puts sort of an additional tax on some of our resources.
If we were to help housing in general, that it would eventually help this situation as well?
I am not, I'm not a believer that there's one solution. I think you have to really chip away on it a person at a time. So every time we build an affordable housing development that actually is able to house, say, 30 families, well, that's 30 families. That is 30 families that are not on the street anymore that have a place to put down roots and start to build back. Because let's face it, you have to build back. I mean, first, it's get a shower and get clean and get, you know, settled and organized. And then it's okay, getting some income coming in and trying to put one foot in front of the other to get to a point where you're able to actually support the household. It's a very, very difficult thing. It involves often wraparound services. It's not just about putting someone in housing. It's also about providing other services that can get them from point A to point B. One of the things that we had been supporting, I was talking about earlier, was a fund through HOPE, the Hillsborough Organization for Progress and Equality, to put together housing units with supportive services around them. And unfortunately, a lot of that money got cut in this year's budget. I hope we'll be able to restore some next year.
Thank you so much for coming and telling us all about what you're doing at the commission.
Well, thank you for having me. I appreciate it. And, you know, we have a $9 billion budget at the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. We are larger than, I think, 12 or 13 states. So what goes on at the county level is really important and it affects your life every day. and it affects your life every day.